May twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Town of Southampton Planning Board. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic in accordance with chapter one of the laws of two thousand and twenty-two and at least. Until future notice, all the board's meetings will be held remotely by a video conference, so we ask the public to continually check the town's websites for updates and new information. Please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. Nation. Invisible. He and justice.
Uh, can we have a roll call, please, Gloria?
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Fiddy.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board member Helen Nato.
Present.
Board Member Wutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
We have a core, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Five public hearings this evening, we have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will be meeting and holding the speakers in a virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public should state their name and address for the record. A further reminder that despite the Zoom environment, all comments should be directed to the board and not to other participants. The link to participate in this meeting via Zoom can be found on the town's website. This meeting is also being livestreamed on the town's website on the Town Clerks Meeting Portal. If you're having difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit the Town Clerks Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Public comments can be made via Zoom, by email, or by uploading them to the Town Clerks Portal on the Planning Board's page. You'll see on that page a button you can click to upload your comments. Please do not use the Zoom chat function to register your comments. Any comments made via the chat function will not be included in or made part of the record. Instead, you may either speak at the hearing or submit your comments in writing after the hearing. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Additionally, in accordance with the legislation, these hearings will be recorded and transcribed and will be made available to the public. Just for clarification, there was an error in the newspaper in listing tonight's meeting as being at one sixteen Hampton Road. That is not true. It is a Zoom meeting. And our next meeting, which is June ninth, will also be a Zoom meeting. So please know that it will be listed on the town's website. So, um. Let's move to number one, which is two oh four Butter Lane. And Gloria, and you'll read that. Do we have proper notice, Christine? We do?
Sorry, we do, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Gloria, do you want to read it?
Please take notice, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board. Excuse me, on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven PM via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application entitled two oh four Butter Lane WB LLC. This application is a physical fitness facility used in the existing one-story, five thousand nine hundred sixty-seven square foot building on a thirty-six thousand, five hundred twenty-six square foot property, currently improved with a one-story frame building, metal storage building, and parking situated in the LI forty zoning district, aquifer protection overlay district, and the New York State archeological sensitive area locating it located at two oh four Butter Lane, Bridge Hampton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash eighty-five dash one dash seven dot one.
Thank you, Gloria. And Kyle, I think you represent this application.
Good evening. Kyle Collins with KPC Planning Services here on behalf of two oh four Butter WB LLC, the applicant. And as was mentioned, um, actually, would you like me to share my screen? At this time, I can put some together presentation materials.
Sure. Jackie, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I have it prepared, but he can share.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Oh, good. Let me make it bigger. So the subject site is was identified is that two oh four Lumber Lane shown on the aerial photograph to the it's kind of on the corner, southeast corner of Tradesman's Path and Butter Lane. Um, it is entirely within the LI forty and all the surrounding properties are also in the LI forty zone. Uh, the subject is to utilize an existing building having five thousand six hundred ninety-seven square feet uh, that benefits currently from a CO uh, that states for the property, it says it has two barns and two diesel generators. Uh, that was an updated CO that was issued on March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, as you can see, there's a large frontage along Butter Lane, approximately three hundred feet on Butter Lane. Uh, there's existing two access points, one south of the subject building and one north of the subject building in between uh, the eighteen hundred square foot storage building and the subject building. The proposal is to put in a physical fitness facility, which is a special exception within the LI forty zone. Um, in addition, uh, as part of this application, the uh, site plan uh, indicates that the right now, there's kind of informal parking uh, onsite. Uh, the proposal is to install um, formal parking spaces for eighteen uh, parking spaces. Um, the proposed use, and I like to talk about the gym as it relates to parking. There was a operational uh, description of the proposed physical fitness facility. This is Equinox and it's called Equinox X Hamptons. It's not their typical format for a gym. Uh, it is more for uh, specifically for scheduled personal training and other private and semi-private uh, fitness services uh, or classes such as yoga, Pilates, and meditation and other type of physical fitness uh, services. Um, and the reason why I mention this, this is not like a Planet Fitness where, you know, people come uh, without being scheduled. Uh, and and the reason that's important is is the operations can uh, limit the number of people or occupants within the building through that schedule uh, component. Uh, it's really kind of a personal uh, services uh, gym and not a general gym. Uh, so the under the guidelines of um, three thirty dash uh, ninety-five, which is your off-street parking, a gym is determined by one space per three people as determined by public occupancy. And when you take that, the actual gym uh, facility itself is, you know, within that five thousand uh, square foot plus square foot building. So you actually come out with a uh, a large uh, occupancy and parking space. So the parking, just taking the uh, requirements under the code was thirty-four spaces for that use as well as two spaces for the storage building, the eighteen hundred square feet for a total of thirty-six. What is proposed is uh, eighteen parking spaces onsite, so this application would have require a variance of eighteen uh, parking spaces. Like I said, the the club is restricting the number of people at any one time to enter the club to forty-eight and which generates an actual demand for parking of sixteen spaces or two less than what's proposed. Now, to further uh, analyze what the impacts or the likelihood of the parking demand associated with the use, the applicant hired VHB to do a parking study last August uh, over uh, April twenty-seventh weekend, including Friday, Saturday, and Sunday parking analysis as well as one midweek, which was August twenty-fifth on a Wednesday to determine what was the actual parking uh, demand during those peak summer times. And they found that the highest uh, generated parking during that time, over that time, was fourteen vehicles. And therefore, their conclusion in their parking analysis study was that only eighteen, the eighteen parking spaces provided uh, would accommodate both the gym use and the uh, storage use. Uh, it is a special exception standard. Uh, I did submit um, a report outlining uh, how the application meets those standards, which is included. And if you look at the standards, it's really tailored towards a multi-tenanted site to make sure that there's not a conflict between, say, a gym that's next to, say, as you know, a metal fabricator or some higher industrial use. This is really, although there are two uses, one is strictly a storage building, does not have a lot of traffic generated with it. And um, so as presented in that special exception standards, uh, the uh, feel that the proposed self-storage facility as well as the site meets those special exception standards.
So Kyle, I I just have a couple of questions, Kyle. I made a site visit yesterday.
Yeah.
Um, and so my and and Equinox has their sign the job. Are they functioning?
Yes, they've they've I got involved because they got a violation. So that was last year, and that's why they, you know, were able to do those parking analysis while they were open last summer.
Okay, so okay, that verifies that. And then I also saw a lot of parking on Tradesman's Path. Um, so uh, we would have to indicate that that would be restricted because that's a fairly busy in and out uh, into the industrial.
The gym right now i- is not operational. It's going to be operational, I believe, until thi- this weekend. They might have had some, but if you notice, Tradesman's Path has uh, some of those on-street partners associated with those other light industrial sites that are on Tradesman's Path.
Well, this was.
Five other.
Snug up to the Tradesman's Path, right to the north, to the northern line of this property. So I didn't know whether people were already in there or you had workers or.
Yeah.
Looked like they were preparing just right along this north. Um. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, are you proposing any outdoor activities?
Well, right now, there's um, outdoor on the, I mean, formally as part of this application, there is that outdoor um, uh, concrete patio on the south side that is proposed to have it. Right now, there is a tent because of the COVID situation. Um, that would not be there uh, once the formal application was submitted because that is where uh, eight of the proposed parking spaces. If at the time that it was found before the formal application, uh, there could be a small uh, area behind the subject building uh, that could accommodate further outdoor um, physical fitness activities.
So you're saying now that there's a tent occupying where eight park, you're you will temporarily eliminate an eight park must space. Can you show us where that is?
Right here.
Okay, so those eight spaces are not available temporarily because there's an outdoor tent?
No, right now, there's there's probably the way it lays out now and and they're right now, they don't have the benefit of what's required buffer here. So we relocated it into a conforming location, but there's approximately six parking spaces now that are located in this area. The tent uh, is in line with this uh, concrete patio. So it does not take up the entire site there, but it's I drove by there yesterday and make sure the postings was still there as well as this morning. So, um, it is not taking up the entire area currently.
Yes, so, but there's a there's a tent now, there was a tent all of last summer?
Yes, and that was, you know, to meet the state's mandate for, you know.
Understood, understood, but I mean, i- it's it's almost that you know, almost, I I think the tent is going to be a permanent. It looks like it may become a permanent part of the facility. That's that's the only reason I'm asking because.
Not that location.
Yeah.
Not that location. Like I said, if it it was found that uh, you know, particularly if the pandemic, there would uh, be, those activities would be moved to behind the uh, behind the building.
Okay, did you do you have amplified sound as part of the tent? Music?
I would have to find out uh, from the applicant. I have not personally taken a a class there, so I would have to find that out. I'm sure that would be an issue, so I would say you'd probably condition it on that, but.
Okay.
They have pending violations now?
Well, they have a, you know, they utilizing the uh, the subject site without the necessary approval, so yes.
Kyle, did you? I'm sorry, Jackie, I don't mean to interrupt you if you want to follow up.
No, no.
Uh, Kyle, I think you said um, up to forty-eight people would be admitted at any one time, is that? Okay, and there'd be eighteen parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay, so even if there's two people per car, you're gonna have.
It's one, the standard is one parking space per three people. So at forty-eight, the way you calculate it is divide that by three and that would result in sixteen parking spaces demanded for forty-eight people in the building at one time, so.
Okay.
And that also includes employees, so that would be would be accounted for in that number. Uh, and there's also eighteen, and you have to account for the two spaces required for the eighteen hundred square foot storage building. So sixteen, there'll be for the uh, uh, the physical fitness facility and two for the storage building.
Okay, so, okay, so the standard is that there will be three per car.
Yeah.
Okay, and with regard to Jackie's comment about Tradesman's Path and restrictions, I think that's a private road or private street, so I don't know there would be any uh, enforceable uh, restrictions we'd be allowed to put up there, even if it was determined.
My understanding is Tradesman's Path has been taken into the highway system.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
It's indicated as such on the GIS system, but.
Okay, okay.
We could, we could confirm that, but I believe it it has been taken into the system.
Oh, okay.
Kyle, is this a full-service gym?
No, it is not a full-service gym. In terms of full, so well, the question is, what's the definition of full-service gym? If you say full service, I would think that that would be like a Planet Fitness. No, it's not a Planet Fitness.
Really spin class and Peloton kind of activities?
Primarily, it is, it could, you know, it has all the facilities that in terms of equipment that a gym, a full-service gym, but it operates based on primarily based on scheduling private training sessions and the semi-private classes. So they can control it. It's also, you know, uh, they have a receptionist who's at the desk, so you know, everything is is checked in and it's kind of very controlled uh, in order to get here.
Uh, okay. Yeah, the reason why I ask is typically, typically, you know, you see peak times at at you know, full-service gyms, uh, early mornings and then directly after work, but if it's it makes more sense for a smaller facility to do, you know, to have scheduled classes.
But but if there's a class and there are forty-eight people allowed in the gym and they have a class scheduled with forty-eight people showing up, are those people going to be told they have to carpool? Because there'll be no place for them to put their car?
Well, that's why I, you know, we did say, okay, what is the practical reality? And this was operated last year, and the way it functioned last year in the peak of the summer hours with uh, was that they only generated forty-eight uh, the highest peak was fourteen vehicles during that peak parking time. So from a practical reality of the way the the usage of the gym uh, worked is that, you know, they only generated four, fourteen spaces.
But my math suggests that if they wanted to do full boat, then they don't have enough place for the people's cars.
If if there's, each person was driving separately?
Yeah, because I've been, I, when I go to the gym, I go to the gym by myself. I don't call a friend and say, let's carpool.
Kind of unrealistic to think three people are going to go to the gym in one car.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't understand the code, but that's a whole separate subject.
Based on a public assembly uh, standard.
When did V, when did VHB do their their study?
Um, August.
August.
August. It was August, the peak season, August of last year, between August uh, uh, the weekend of August twenty-seventh, that was uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they did do one midweek session uh, as well, and that was on Wednesday, August twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Do they have steam and sauna?
Uh, no, and there is no locker rooms. This isn't somewhere you're hanging out. There's no, I mean, locker rooms per se. They do have small locker where you can throw your stuff in, but there's no locker rooms or or showers or any of those types of facilities, which you would typically find on a traditional gym.
Right. We have, we have one of these more boutique-style gyms um, in Speon. I'm sure Kyle knows about it because he and I don't live far from one another. Um, I I, if it's the same type of concept, it's not unrealistic to think that there will be fourteen cars or less in any given time. Um, the the uh, smaller gyms, the boutique style, you're you're lucky to see seven or eight people in there at a time. I'm not arguing for it. I'm just, I'm just saying it's not really out of the realm of um, you know, it's it's not unreasonable to think that there would be fourteen cars or less in any given time.
I'm sort of thinking that maybe there has to be some language if this goes through that suggests that the management has to manage that there'll never be more than fourteen or sixteen cars and and how we do that, the language is.
I I don't, I don't think that's a realistic um, uh, condition we can impose, Gloria. The fact remains, Tradesman is a town road, this unless the town board eliminates parking, there is parking of permissible parking on Tradesman's Path. Some people are going to bike, you know, bicycle over there, um, and there's onsite parking. I don't think you can anticipate. Um, you can condition that type of uh, that type of park parking restriction.
Well, I think first of all, we need verification if it is a town road. So, um, because there are all kinds of restrictions internally about this.
Uh, the designation of that white center line means that it is a town road. If it was private, it would be in green.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Because when you get to the end of that, um, the turnaround piece, there are the restrictions about going further. You have the big warehouse and you have retail.
Yeah, those are private, you know, the common driveways feeding private, um, yeah, they don't want people driving up into their warehouse space.
Kyle, when you go by, I'd like, I'd love to have a a site visit with you to see the inside, so.
Sure.
Let me know. If anyone else wants to go.
Absolutely, lovely. Here's just, I mean, just to have, you know, the exterior, it's basically, you know, what the 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 old barn, it used to be for, I I think originally it was a potato processing facility for potatoes for the agricultural.
And then it was a private vineyard.
Well, I don't think. I don't think that ever opened up officially.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't open to the public. It was private, privately owned for a private wine collection.
That's right, by Leslie Alexander, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there anybody who'd like to speak from the public on this application?
Do you know hands?
Okay, so if we have no more comments, I'd close this with a ten-day written comment period.
Pre-submission.
Pre-submissions, thirty days, sorry.
Thirty days. I'll move it.
Moved by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor? Close abstentions sticks in favor? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you very much. I'm on for the next one, so.
You're on five eleven farm? Um, do we have notice, Christine?
I keep forgetting to turn my mic on. Yes, Manager, we do.
Okay, we do. And Dennis, you're reading this.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two at seven PM via video conferencing to consider pre-application titled five eleven Farm LLC. The application proposes a two-lot subdivision in a transfer development right easement area of two hundred forty thousand square feet representing three lots on a fourteen point four six acre property currently improved with a single-family home, pool, and tennis court situated in CR eighty and CR two hundred zoning districts and aquifer protection overlay district located at seven twenty-one Loper's Path, Bridge Hampton Tax Map number nine hundred thirty-six two dash nine dot two.
Okay. Kyle, you're representing this?
Yeah, just for the record again, Kyle Collins, KPC Planning Service here on behalf of the applicant, uh, five eleven Farm LLC. As Dennis pointed out in the public notice, it is a fourteen point four six acre site. It is a split-zone parcel. Uh, there is a a light by high-power tension lines, and if you'd like, I could share my screen again.
Please.
Yeah. Okay. Let me just make that a little bigger. Okay. So this is subject site, um, and the power lines uh, go down the middle of the uh, uh, the parcel. Uh, the northern portion is uh, in CR two hundred. The southern portion is in uh, CR eighty. Um, the primarily, the existing development is south of the power lines or the zone line. Uh, in addition to the development on the site, as you can see, uh, there is a almost uh, just shy of an acre man-made lined pond uh, there um, on the site as well as the other improvements that were mentioned before. Uh, the subject site has an as-of-right yield of five lots, uh, as was submitted with the application. The proposal is to actually do a reduced density uh, plan uh, subdivided into two lots, basically along the zone line uh, with a um, six point two acre site in the CR two hundred and then a eight point two acre site uh, south of the power lines or in the CR eighty site. Uh, I say it's a reduced density plan. The applicant is proposing to remove three of the development rights from the site. Uh, this is kind of analogous to a conservation opportunities plan. Uh, conservation opportunity subdivision uh, requires fifty percent reduction in yield, which in this case, uh, he meets that standard, although in the conservation opportunity subdivision uh, requires eighty percent open space, but the concept of removing the development rights as part of those country as a tool to uh, preserve um, primex soils um, and or open space uh, is one of the objectives uh, that's being met by uh, this plan. Also, uh, although it is not in the agricultural overlay district, it does uh, have eighty percent uh, six percent of the site is primex soils. Um, they, actually, I do have, hold on a second. Oops. There's the primex soil, so you can see much of the site is got primex soils on it.
It's the dark green?
The the dark and the light green, and those are both uh, primex soils designations.
Thank you.
Hold on a second.
Bridge Hampton.
I should have a legend here up in the top here. So the dark, the dark, the dark brown is the uh, farmland of statewide importance. That's the higher level, and then prime farmland soils uh, is in the light green and the tan is non-prime soils. Uh, if you located directly to the south of the site is unrestricted farmlands. Um, here, it is not preserved. Um, so the objective of the uh, applicant is to subdivide. So the objective of the, uh, applicant is to subdivide, subdivide it into those two lots. Uh, he does, uh, want to utilize the northern lot, uh, as part of the historical agricultural use of the property uh, and continue or to, uh, farm it. Uh, I do have an historical aerial photo that shows that this was all farmed at one, well, primarily farmed at one time in conjunction with the, uh, property to the south. So he would like to, uh, basically have a gentleman's farm. As part of the conservation easement that's required for removing the development rights. Um, as you can see, there is some existing vegetation, uh, that is along the northern portions. And if you hold on one second. Here's the proposed plan. So the area crosshatched in here would be the area that would be preserved through that, uh, TDR easement. Now, with the proposal would be is to the area that is existing, uh, vegetation, and you can tell in the, this, I'm not sure, can you see my, my, uh, my mouse when I move it? Good. So that's the existing line of vegetation, and we did that, uh, intentionally to preserve the existing uh, areas. And I would say that the conservation easement would, uh, include two different areas. One area to keep totally undisturbed, but then these other areas would be, uh, able to be farmed and utilized the primex soils in, in this. So that would be proposed to be accounted for in that conservation easement.
What's your plan for divvying up the pond?
Right now, it's proposal to keep the ponds. The pond's going to remain.
And it, but it straddles your lot lines, right?
Uh, yes, there wouldn't have to be an easement in that location. Jackie, you're absolutely correct right here. And, you know, we gave a little buffer around it because you wouldn't want the easement to go right up. Uh, but I would say, yes, there would have to be some type of easement between the two property owners in terms of maintenance. Uh, we had that issue on, um, Bucky Stebbins subdivision of the land, uh, of that old sand mine off of, um,
Lot line.
Off of Brooklynmont Road that accounted for that, that pond that was straddling, I think, four different lot lines. That's basically the general proposal. Glad to entertain any, uh, questions.
Do you put, does the owner plan to sell that ag reserve to a farmer?
No, he prepares on, on farming it himself.
But you said two property owners.
I will. At some point, some, you know, we're going to have two lots. So sometime in the future, those, he has no, no intention to, uh, sell them at this point. But in order to ensure, uh, you know, if and when at some time in the future, we'd want to account for the maintenance, uh, of that pond, uh, between the two lots.
Can we see the subdivision map again?
This is the subdivision map.
You didn't, I thought you had another map up. Okay.
I have. Well, this is the proposed map and the lot line for the, it runs down the middle. And then there is a small flag over here that gets you to the road frontage. So the lots are basically split the parcel along the lot line. However, this doesn't have any frontage on the road, so there is a small flag to get access onto Loper's path. Where there's, there's an existing driveway there too, so there would be kind of be a common drive here.
So Kyle, are those two existing, uh, houses or properties on this, uh, southern lot?
Yes, that's the development.
Both remain on the same lot?
There, there are two existing building, a garage and a house, and then there's a poolhouse and a pool and a tennis court and, and the pond.
It's difficult to see. I thought they were two, um, two separate homes, so.
No, 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 no. No, one's the garage, one, uh, is the larger one, orange structure is the single family home. And then that other side of the pond is a poolhouse with a pool and a tennis court.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that almost looks like a billing envelope where the tennis court is, I guess. It's difficult to read it at, at this scale, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, any other questions? We'll open it to the public. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this? Charles, anyone there?
No hands.
Okay, so this is a pre-apps, so we'll close with a 10 day written comment period. Motion to entertain to close this with a 10 day.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, six in favor.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening and have a great weekend.
You too. Number three is Sean Dunn. Um, and do we have sufficient notice, Christine?
We do, manager.
Thank you. And Craig, you're going to read it into the record?
Yeah. Please take notice. A public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 26, 2022 at 7:00 PM via video conferencing to consider the final application entitled Sean Dunn. The application consists of a two lot subdivision of a 50, uh, 59,467 square foot parcel, currently improved with the single family residence and customary accessory structures. Situated within the R40 zoning district located at 42 Apica Point Lane, Suffolk County Tax Map, number 900-376-1-45.
Suzanne Herman, are you representing this application?
I am.
Okay, great. You're on.
Okay. Um, Susannah Herman and Consultants, 1319 North Sea Road, Southampton for the applicant. Um, you've seen this a couple of times. It's just a, a two lot subdivision. We had to get the pre-application reauthorized because the health department took a long time. They needed a variance um, and had to purchase Pine Baron credits. Um, but it's a pretty straightforward two lot subdivision. It's in the R40 zoning district, and we would be creating two lots, which would be 27,061 square feet. That's the lot with the existing house and pool. And lot two would be 32,407 square feet. Um, the, a zoning variance has been issued for the undersized lots. They are about the same size as the lots in the area. Um, so there would, lot two would be a flag lot. There's already an existing driveway that goes towards, um, goes down, partially down the flag. Um, the existing house was, um, connected to a new upgraded IA sanitary system as one of the conditions of the subdivision approval with the, uh, health department. Um, so I, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Charles? Charles, any, any hands raised? I hear nothing. No hands? Okay, so no further questions, uh, 10 day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria and all in favor.
Aye.
Close abstentions, six in favor. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Number four, Rodrigo Escalante. Christine, do we have?
We do, manager.
We have proper notice. George, you're going to read that.
Yes, uh, please take notice. A public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 26, 2022, at 7:00 PM via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Rodrigo Escalante. The application consists of a standard plan with three lots on a 61,318 square foot parcel located in the R15 zoning districts and situated within the New York State archeologically sensitive areas and a high priority water quality zone located at 712 and 718 Flanders Road, State Route 24 in the Hamlet of Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map 901-143-2-50 and 51.
Daphne Vaughn, you're representing this?
Yes, I am. Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental Planning, uh, 225 Montocelli Highway, Moritzes, New York. So, um, the subject property is located at 712 and 718 Flanders Road, also known as two, uh, Route, Route 24 in Flanders. The two lots combined are a total of 1.408 acres or just over 61,000 square feet. It's in R15 zoning district. The southern portion of the property, as you can see there in that aerial, is developed with a one and a half story residence and stone circular driveway. Uh, benefits from a pre-existing CO that was issued in April of 2002 to a prior owner. Mr. Escalante, uh, owns the property since October of 2002. Uh, at the present time, he wishes to combine both of those lots together and subdivide them into three residential lots. Lot one would be that southerly portion of the property uh, that contains the existing residence with the majority of that stone driveway uh, with abandonment of that circular access for lot one. Uh, that lot would be 16,769 square feet. The other two proposed lots would be the vacant parcels to the north of the development. And they would both take access from a proposed common driveway and utility easement located on the west side of the parcel. That would be comprised of two flag lots, uh, of 15.20 feet in width each. That would require a variance from the 20 foot required width, uh, from the zoning board. Um, so lot one would not utilize that common driveway, would utilize the existing curb cut for that major part of the driveway. The other two lots would use the common driveway. Uh, both lots, two and three, are the same square footage in the bulk area at 18,895 square feet, uh, which exceeds the minimum for R15 zoning. They would both connect to public water that exists in Flanders Road and would all be, uh, upgraded or installed with IA sanitary system. As would be required by the health department. So Flanders Road's a busy thoroughfare, and that's why we're utilizing that common driveway. Um, what else?
So, um, do you have enough square footage in those two northern lots? To come off a flag? Do you have enough square footage in the bulk of the lot?
To cut off of?
To come off the flags. Come off the flag. One is 21,000?
There, but the bulk of both, each of the lots is, is 18,895. So the flags, uh, make them larger. I'm not sure I understand your question.
I'm just questioning the bulk square footage of those two lots that are, they are essentially flag lots, are they not?
Yeah.
And the code requires what, one and a half times?
No.
No.
The design, that's, that's a design standard, a design goal.
A single flag or a double flag?
The, the design, the, 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 the one and a half times is, is really, it, it, it's a design requirement. It's not in the zoning code. It's not in chapter 330. It's to facilitate larger flag lots wherever possible. So in other words, if you're in an R20 zone and you have a 50,000 square foot parcel, you don't want to create 25 and 25. You want to create 20 in the front and 30 in the back.
In the back, right.
To give more space to the real lot.
Okay, and these are R15?
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't need any variances here except for?
Just the flags.
The width of the flags?
Yes, and we're showing them each equivalent of 15.2, uh, where they're supposed to be 20 feet. So, um, what else? I was going to just say that, um, the owner's proposing to use the two new lots for his children to develop in the future. Uh, the whole property is cleared except for some arbivideae that's uh, around the development. His property is not in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District or Central Pine Barrens. That's actually right across Flanders Road. Um, so if this is not subject to any of those restrictions.
Any questions?
The, the, the existing house and driveway, it looks to me, Jackie, if you could just pull that map up a little bit further, um, that the, 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 there's an access to Flanders Road from, for the house adjacent to the flag lots. Would it not be better to have all three houses from the same curb cut? Because Flanders Road is so busy?
Well, so there's two existing curb cuts technically.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the proposed common driveway is going to utilize that existing curb cut from that circular drive, and we were just going to leave the existing, just because of the way, I guess that driveway is right now, we were just going to try to leave as much of that existing development intact as possible. Um, that front lot would remain the same, except for, would have to cut off some of that northern portion of that driveway, which is all pervious, so it wouldn't be a big deal per se. Um, the sanitary system would be upgraded, um, probably closer to the front of the lot in the area where that circular drive would be removed. Um, so, I, I mean, I don't know, I guess it could be something that we could look at. I don't know if that would really. I think the distance to the house would be closer over there, and I think he wants to try to retain that development, so that might be more constrained on the, on the existing house than what we're showing right now. Um, that's the only thing I can think of, also, right off the bat.
Well, it's a pre-app, pre-app of stage, so we certainly have time to work on the subdivision details.
Yeah, because just looking at the map, it's 44.8 feet for the, the setback of the house uh, from that, that side of the property, where it's 68.4, where we're proposing the common driveway right now.
But you're taking down that arched driveway, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so we would maintain that curb cut over there, um, for the common driveway access and utilize the other curb cut for that front lot.
Okay, any other questions? Charles, is there anyone from the public?
No hands.
No hands. So if there are no further questions, um, an application, uh, I mean, a 10 day written comment period for this pre-app. Entertain a motion to close with the 10 day written comment period by Dennis, second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Close abstentions, six in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the last application is the Clug Barn. Council, do we have proper notice on this?
We do, manager.
You do. Tom, you're going to read this into the record?
Tom, you're, um, you, Tom, you're muted.
Muted.
There we go. I'm sorry, I didn't see myself on the list, but I do have it here. Uh, let's see. Want to make sure I find the right one.
Clug Barn, Hamlet of Northampton.
Okay, I'm ready. Please take notice. A public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 26, to 2022 at 7:00 PM via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled Clug Barn. The application is proposed on a 182,035, 182.035 acre parcel located in the CR 200 zoning district and situated within the agricultural overlay district, the aquifer protection overlay district, and the central pine barrens core preservation area in the Hamlet of Northampton located south of Old Moritzes Road. In the Hamlet of Northampton, located south of Old Maritzis Road. At one Old Maritzis Road, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash two three five dash one dash forty-seven point one.
Thank you. Welcome. Monica Klug, are you representing this application for yourself?
Yes.
Okay, just.
Yes, and my son Brett is here.
Okay. State your name for the record and then just give us a brief overview, please.
Yes, I'm Monica Klug. And my son Brett Klug is going to make the presentation.
Yep.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Brett Klug. We're applying for a lean. We're applying for a lean to addition to our barn. Applied for the barn to be built back in two thousand seventeen. And completed that in two thousand twenty. And we've been using it for storage equipment and supplies required to produce straw bales and hay bales. That we use for, you know, and sell for bedding at local buck farm and silo erosion prevention for construction yards and stuff like that. And we're looking to expand our crop diversity a little bit and do some perennial wheat. And we need more storage space basically for this. Yeah, the lean two is basically used for additional storage and basically a small office so that I don't have to work out of my truck anymore.
It's a very attractive barn. Really nice architecture. So the addition that you want to put on is coming on the side with the lean two or the others that side? Yeah.
It would be on the west side of the property. So on the picture we're looking at now, on the right side.
Right, right.
It would basically make the building look a little more symmetrical.
So it have similar on the, on the other side.
Yeah.
That's on the left side.
Yeah.
Correct. Yes, it would, it would be closed in on the right side, not open like that, but, but yes.
So the roof line might be the same, but it'll have walls.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward, seven hundred and twenty square foot addition. It's nice. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I've, yeah, that's basically it still.
Great. Any questions? If not. We'll close with a ten day.
There anymore for the public though?
No public.
All right, no public.
No public.
With a ten day written comment period. We have a motion to close with a ten day written comment. Motion by Craig, second by Dennis, all in favor. Those abstentions, six in favor. Thank you, Monica and Greg.
Beautiful, beautiful job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night.
You too.
Okay, we have done it. We've had a full day. Just to say that our next, our next meeting is a Zoom meeting on June ninth. And then we don't know what's happening thereafter, so.
Fingers crossed.
Yes, both body parts crossed.
Yes, right, 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 because going back right at the height of the traffic would be just wonder, a wonderful thing.
Not to mention the Omicron variant.
Exactly, exactly, so.
This time said twenty percent of people that got COVID have long COVID.
Yeah, I read that. One in five.
One in five and over sixty-five, one in four.
Yep.
Wow. Well, we'll see. I mean, the governor would have to extend the emergency decree. And she, she often, well, I mean, Christine, you'd probably hear sooner than we would.
Yeah. You're muted, Christine.
You're muted, Christine, you're muted.
Gosh, I keep doing that. I'll definitely keep you informed. They had the hearing on Tuesday night with respect to having our, the ability for the public to weigh in on hybrid situations and that past, so. That's what we will be doing going forward.
Right, I mean.
Absence any other.
Yeah, right, but for the boards themselves, that's a whole other animal.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so everybody have a safe Memorial Day weekend and don't entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria and all in favor.
Aye.
Attention.
Have a good weekend.